Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our special meeting today, April 24th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Certainly, Madam Ma'am. Mayor James?
Here.
Councilman Winkler?
Present.
Councilman Tullinger?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
She's here, but her stuff is here. So she's here somewhere.
Councilman Jenkins?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you so much. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hopefully, you all were able to see the agenda, even though there's not an approval of the agenda on there. I am going to modify that agenda and add that in there. If you all are okay with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of "approve the agenda." Do I have a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, with the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Approval of the minutes, it's our closed session. If you all have had an opportunity to see that, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes for closed session 423 as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session on 42324.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilwoman Winkler, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us down to our next part of the agenda, which is public comment. I ask that if there's anybody that would like to speak this evening, that you, thank you Director Phipps, that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and please try to keep your comments to about three minutes, and I believe, wait a minute, I believe that would be Ms. Sprague? Come on down. Yes, and please push the button there to make it green. Thank you very much. The time is yours.
Okay, I just have some comments to make. I'm sorry, I'm Robin Sprague. I live in the town of La Plata, and I am a taxpayer as well, and we have businesses in the town as well. I just wanted to address the budget that was brought up last evening, and it seemed that some members maybe have been confused about the budget. I was wondering if that was provided to you all beforehand, if you had a chance to see the budget before you voted on it here? This is not a question and answer situation, but I am questioning that myself, whether or not you guys saw that, because when the treasurer brought to you a balanced budget, I guess I'm confused as to why that balanced budget was not approved. And then going on further into the minutes, I see that the majority of the council wanted to increase the budget to cover pensions for, I believe it's our police force, public works. I don't recall if there was any other any other group involved or included in that or not. But I was just wanting to say that I think this is not a very lucrative time in our entire nation, especially as the small town of La Plata, to increase taxes at this point. It seems as though to do what it is that the majority is wishing to do, and by the treasurer's own words, to enhance this would require raising taxes on the town of La Plata. I think we need to look at the bigger picture and where we are as an economy in this country as a whole, and we are included in that. Charles County, for one, it's going to, our housing assessments are up almost 31%, give or take. Commodities are up, our food, our groceries, our gas, everything is through the roof. You have many people in this town who live on fixed incomes, my mother included, and all of her friends who live in her little elderly community. I don't see this being a positive thing for them. So, you know, I think this is a really good time to tighten our belt, maybe entertain some budget cuts, because we need to look at the big picture of where we are sitting. Everything cannot keep rising. We have got to put a cap on this somewhere. And if you allow for this increase, as the treasurer said, and then we have to raise taxes to cover these pension enhancements, then that's not going to be very good for those people who, you know, are on these fixed incomes. And I guess my question is too, I know it's not a question and answer, but I understand that there is a Maryland state pension that is available, that they have this Maryland state pension, if I'm correct. And so perhaps the issue should be with our representatives in Annapolis to address the state pension. Maybe that needs to be revised. But I don't think this can fall on this little town of La Plata to entertain raising or enhancing pensions at this time, if this thing is not feasible. And those are really the direct words, pretty much, from your treasurer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sprague. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our next item agenda, and that is the discussion of the general funds. Mr. Manuel, floor is yours.
All right, Mayor James, I'll call Karina to the table. Following our discussions last night, you know, we heard from the council that we wanted to explore further potential pension. We'll call them employee enhanced benefits. So Karina has been working diligently all day to try to provide scenarios, building off the spreadsheet that she had originally provided, where we can build in scenarios and show what the impact would be to our overall balance between expenditures versus. So Karina, without any further, I'm not sure if we want to take input from the council.
The majority to agree to one particular scenario.
Of course, much of this is based on if there will be a tax increase. We need to publish that probably very soon. So that's what we're building towards, or not building towards, as it may be. So based on tonight's discussion, as we said, if there is the need for a tax increase, we do have to publish that in the newspaper. I believe a public hearing is the
Yes.
what would be necessary in order to do that. So that is sort of the clock we're up against, so any decision tonight would be greatly beneficial to the process. So Karina is bringing up the spreadsheet.
Well, she is bringing up the spreadsheet. Mr. Manuel, could you please just summarize the differential meet and greet, meet and confer today?
Yes, the town of La Plata met with the county, Board of County Commissioners statutory requirement to meet and confer on the tax differential for town residents. Us, the town of La Plata and Indian Head, were present, as we are the two localities that receive a tax differential from the Charles County Commissioner, Board of Commissioners. We did request that the rate be held at .142 per $100 assessed value on the real estate side. There were some questions asked, and it would come up, we will find out for sure when the overall county's budget is presented. Based on the calculations done by the county, the rate actually has been going trending down the last two years, coming out of COVID. Last year, the county commissioners did hold the previous year, the higher rate of the two, at 14.2. And we, the town, on behalf of our residents, did request that the county commissioners again hold the rate at .142.
Thank you very much. Now, are you ready?
Yeah, so this budget includes our current operating expenses, and below are additional expenses that has been discussed previously, such as the COLA. The COLA currently is not in the balance here. There's also the two different pension plan options. A 457 percentage contribution for the select positions, which is the Public Works and PD positions, 457 for all positions. A reduction in the employer contribution for HSA, and a 10%, 90% split in the health insurance premium. So this is really an activity for you as a council to voice what your priorities are and see how it fits in the budget. And we come up with a balanced budget based on the majority's priority.
All right, we'll open the floor for comments, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Larson. If we could go to cell, what is that? Oh, so it didn't show me the cell on here. That has the enhanced pension benefits, Plan 3.
Yes.
654. H, 658. Can we highlight that cell to see, so that we'll know what actually made up that dollar amount? And if you can share with us what made up that dollar amount? And this is the initial startup cost for the enhanced benefits.
Well, the initial cost plus the 6%.
Right. But that's the initial cost?
Yeah. So the initial cost is 667,000. I'm subtracting out 43,000, that would be part of the cost on the enterprise fund side. We're adding 25,000 for the administrative costs and the auditing that will need to be done with the pension system.
And D55 has nothing in it?
No, that was a cell for merit, and you guys, unless you want me to put it back on here, I took it off.
Okay.
Remove that line item, so that is not reflected in there. If there's a COLA, this amount will go up, because it's calculated based on what the salaries are going to be for FY '25.
Okay, so if we put in the pension plan benefits for Plan 3, leave the COLA as is, remove the 450, anything that's in the cell for the 457?
The only thing right now in here is that enhanced benefit.
Okay, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm looking at what I have, not looking at the screen. Okay, and then we go down. Yeah, go down to the, okay, you didn't put the COLA in, you put the 3% in. Okay, now go down to where we are. And we put a tax increase of the 3%, and we have zero.
Well, that plus 220,000, that would
Come out of the
come out of fund balance to balance the budget, if there's only a 3% increase.
In the next year, the calculations that you provided with, to us, we're, for FY '25, so we're assuming since we're starting in FY '25, that 200,000 won't be it. But FY '26, you're projecting that the cost for the pension benefit would be 211,000, not the 654 that we're starting there. So that's a significant difference in cost, the startup is the problem.
Yes.
And I understand that.
And the long-term risk that the town's going to have, making sure that we can provide the benefits that are promised within this plan.
And the concern is primarily over the water situation and not being able to continue to build. But if we resolve the water situation and we are continuing to build, then we continue to get the revenue from those homes.
Well, I mean, that's one, the other thing is just making sure, I mean, the, what we were provided from Bolton were estimates on what they think it's going to cost to maintain those benefits, and this is an indefinite benefit that we're going to have to continue on.
Thank you, those were my additions.
Okay. Council, any other comments or questions, or having to put input in there?
Thank you, I have a question, thank you again for the spreadsheet. So we could plug in 2% COLA?
Yeah, I'm creating another one.
Okay, well, I guess let me ask a couple of questions first. Other, I assume then that there are options to say, for argument's sake, if there was an option for Plan 3 enhanced benefit, but we removed the 457 contribution to all positions, is that an option?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the only thing that we have in the budget is what our current cost is. I've just created a new sheet for what you
I have it here too.
It's clear.
So, but under the current way it's presented here to now, I want to make sure that I'm reading this right, okay? So the way this reads, there is, there is a quote deficit of 85,577, right? But then that's covered by fund balance, right? And I want to make sure I'm reading this right.
Right now, there's a deficit of 564,000 without any COLA, enhanced benefits, any pension. That's, that's the deficit for our current operations. But that deficit is for assets, which we, which I have here to use fund balance to cover those fixed assets. What we're focusing on is the the operating costs.
Right, I'm trying to understand that as well. So I don't see that 500 and something thousand you're referring to.
Oh, it's, it's over here, so
Over here, where?
Right here, on line 44, row 44.
Yep.
So we have
Got it, okay, got it, see, got it, okay. But I get the, I guess I'm trying to understand, under this present scenario, with no enhanced budget, we have a deficit?
Due to
Operating
capital, not for operating.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Not for operating.
So, so the operating budgets, there is a deficit, but it's ruled out by fund balance. So that's what I'm trying to get to, because that's what it says to me here.
Well, that, what do you have placed in line 56?
I have 3%, I haven't touched it yet.
Well
I did that at home, but I haven't done it here.
What do you have in line 58?
Zero.
Okay, what do you have in line 59?
Zero.
And what do you
I haven't made any changes, other than what's here.
Oh, so this is now what it looks like?
Right.
With a deficit of 57,000?
Right.
Okay, so yeah, in that case, we, we would just use fund balance
Fund balance, right.
to bridge that, being that it's not a significant amount.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Can I ask one more question? So we, if we're talking about only increasing property tax, and so you did a calculation of the property tax at the worst-case scenario, 6%. And so someone with a $400,000 home, the increase would be to one, from 12, $1,280 in taxes to $1,520, which is a $240 difference.
Yeah.
That's the only thing the increase in property tax would do, would affect the mortgage, not any other taxes in the town.
No, it would just be the real property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Karina, does this factor in the anticipated decrease in the differential from the county?
No, that's not a revenue to the town, so we don't account for that in this
But it's, but it is still a cost to the
To the town residents, and that's something you guys have to consider. Yeah. Yes.
So our percentage of the tax is put 32%, and the county's percentage is 58% of the property tax, because it's 100%. So if we're 32, they would be
Yeah, it's not percentage, it's 32 cents per
32 cents, so, and so that's the smallest piece of the residence tax. And when did the county increase their taxes? Was it?
I have no idea when that, I think they're, I'm not sure what the county's increase is.
Okay. Okay.
And Mr. Manuel, did they indicate what the impact would be on the average home if the differential went from .14 to .12?
I believe the director gave an example, I do not recall, I think the overall impact to the county's budget, if they reduced the tax differential from the requested .142 to the level that they sort of, their evaluation sort of indicates, which they show we should be at a .124, so
And was that 290,000?
It was in the $300,000 range.
300,000, so that would obviously impact the residents as well, because they've got to get it from the county. The residents will be on their county, that's for the town, so that would be on our assessment as well, for our property tax?
Yeah, it would be, the differential is a reduction in the county's tax that town residents would pay.
Okay. Councilwoman Winkler, any other questions or comments?
I don't know. I think everybody kind of knows what I'm saying.
Well, it's a very real problem, I think we're going about it all wrong to fix and correct it. I think that for far too long, issues have not been addressed in the manner in which, with long-term thinking and long-term effects, because maybe a previous council sat here and realized that they would not be here, so it wouldn't be their issue to deal with or to worry about. I just think that, that you're opening up Pandora's box by selecting a few to receive an enhanced pension, that in three years or in five years after the cost balloon and more of the people within the town ask for to receive those additional pensions, you're going to be right back here having this conversation on how to fix it.
Okay, Councilman Tullinger?
Yeah, I, Ms. Larson, I know I emailed you a lot of questions between last night and today, and I know, I'm sure other council did. And I just want to thank you for addressing those questions kind of head-on, right? Because this has been a long-drawn-out process, and it's been fluid. I know it's been frustrating, because each question kind of begets another question. And while the town, you know, we've heard many, many, many times over, has not increased taxes in over 20 years, although we're all residents of this town, we're all living here, working here, have, some of us have businesses here as well. It's hard to see many other entities that haven't had an increase in that period of time. With the growth of our town and the expanded need of services, it's difficult to manage these issues. So I really appreciate you addressing the questions head-on, even though, you know, we're going to grill you on them. And just as I understand it here, what you have, and I apologize for going through it one more time, but just because you're managing on the fly, and it's a little bit different than the 459 one, or the one we just got, just because you've edited it as we go. This includes the way we have it, as far as the enhanced services include benefits to who exactly?
Well, right now, there's, I've put in Councilwoman Bryant Ward's suggestions, Councilman Jenkins, and I'm trying to get an idea of, gauge where each of you want to be, and then as a whole, a majority need to figure out what is the priority. Maybe it won't be everything on each of your lists.
Right.
So right now, on your sheet, I have nothing. So whatever you feel is most important to include into this budget is the opportunity to discuss.
Oh, okay, so you're just putting them in as we go? I didn't, I didn't get this breakdown of the spreadsheet as far as each one. So are you looking for us to give us our individual ones for each, and then we're going to compare at the end?
Well, because each of you have your own priorities. So I'm putting, as each of you have your own priorities, and then you guys need to work together and figure out which of those priorities are going to be in the budget.
Work our way back. Okay, so as you have it listed, under the proposed personnel compensation benefits, Plan 3 and Plan 2, as, as it's listed, that accounts for, does this account for Public Works as well as the Police Department?
Yes.
Okay. That
That's what the study was for, and that's what we were getting the numbers for.
Understood. Okay. And, all right, so let's put down, as a fluid worksheet, put down 59, Plan 2, I want to see how that looks and see what we're doing.
Oh, Plan 2, sorry.
And we're getting a little older up here, and really can't see that that much, so could you Who's there? They that, so we can see it?
It is good too, I guess for the record, people watching the
So by adding Plan 2, it's going to increase the budget by 1.1 million, which we then have a deficit of 981,000. To cover that, it would be a 6% or 6 cent increase. It wouldn't be unreasonable to probably do 4 cents and cover the rest with fund balance, but I wouldn't recommend doing more than that.
And again, I think it's important, and I think Councilwoman Bryant Ward was good about clarifying, and I want to do that too. So the reason why we would see the deficit at that amount is for the upfront startup cost, which is significant.
Yes.
And then the yearly after that is indicated where on the Excel sheet.
Well, it's not
Or wouldn't be.
But in my estimates, when we got the numbers, I believe she had said 211,000, that we would need to make sure that we budget, and it increases each year.
And that was for Plan 3, not 2?
Oh.
Plan 3 would be 352,941.
Well
Yeah, so he went to the higher plan.
Okay, let me
I want to see what it looks like.
Oh, I can't. I can't get to that file.
I have it, Matt, you want to see? You chose Plan 4, let's turn it back around.
Yep.
Plan 2, and then you see the cost after that.
So from our December meeting?
What's the note?
I don't have it.
Plan 2, when you get into column N? Does it provide, says 900,000? So that, that's not a $900,000 startup?
But we also have to consider these are estimates, and if we don't, we need to make sure we, I guess my concern is to ensure that we can sustain paying out that benefit.
Sure. Okay.
And the other thing that I wanted to make note is, in this budget, we have almost 500,000 in interest in revenue that we probably won't see for a very long time in the future budgets.
Right, 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 right. Okay. You know, I'm a reserved right to change that as we go, obviously, but I do want to see how it looks like. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Winkler, I did not give you the opportunity to plug in your numbers that you want or not?
I will defer to I will defer to, I think that given the situation that we're in, and and it's not a stopgap. It's or it is a stopgap. It is not an ideal for for all parties involved. And I know there's it's a lot. It's presenting a lot of grief. But I think that the most fiscally prudent decision would be to to go to the COLA. And then whether it's two or three percent, we we, you know, I think with the four fifty seven, while it's not ideal, what it does or what it presents is an opportunity for control. And I think that is something that the more that you 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 create a pension that that I I understand that's what they that what that's what is asked for. But to be fiscally prudent and not know what the long term costs are going to be and what, like I said, I still fall back on while it may have been okay to do so, it is not best practice to include Public Works and Public Safety in the pension. It's 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 not. And I think that the what what serves all parties equally and and best case scenario is at this point is to stick with the four fifty seven or the COLA contribution in conjunction with the four fifty seven as Karina presented the other night. And and, you know, and I think then it requires us to sit down and to do our due diligence to come up and solve it so that it's not at a at the eleventh hour. But that's that's just my personal opinion.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Larson, that there is no there's no option on the Excel for a four fifty seven that wouldn't include Public Works, right?
Not right now, but I could add one.
Not to say that's what you're asking for.
I could add one. I think.
No, I think she'd get it with all part of it included all rankings.
Yeah, I have all employees and then the selected position employees, which would be the Public Works and PD positions. So there's one for that, and then there's one for all positions. If you want to just do the selected positions, that would be one amount. If you want to do all positions, that would be a different amount and depend on what you want to do. You could split it like do maybe one percent for all positions and two or three percent for the selected positions. It's whatever you.
I just was I was just curious because of the Pandora's Box argument. I don't know if your options fitting in the Excel sheet, but it's on my smart thing.
All right, so I am going to go on the record to say that I am going to stick with what the balanced budget was last night. COLA, three percent, four fifty seven, two percent for everyone. And this is a starting point. And I think that this is where we really do roll up our sleeves and start. I know that we have numbers, that we've done a lot of research. But even hearing today how some of the commissioners were reacting to the differential that that gives me a reason to be a little bit concerned. I think that our residents are going to see an increase in their taxes because I don't know if they will give us what we have asked. So in light of everything, I've said it a thousand times. I'll say the thousand and one. I think that a balanced budget that you brought to us last night is for me the way to go and consider that the starting point. All right, Councilwoman Brian Ward?
Thank you. So I'm going to ask the question. And I sent the email and I asked, when we started down this road about the benefits for the police, we were losing police officers. We couldn't recruit them. The conversation came up on how to recruit and retain so that we're not losing them to other jurisdictions who have LOBS or these enhanced benefits. The two there were two things that were important because I don't think any of our residents are going to want to not have police present. And it's not about retirement. It's about making sure that we can afford our operations for this town. The county is not going to pay our operations. We have our own staff and we have to continue to add staff. Without that staffing, we're not going to be able to meet the needs of the residents, and it's going to be really, really bad for them. And they're going to and our staff is going to hear it. So my question is, they asked for two things, to retire in twenty five years with fifty percent benefits. Will the four fifty seven do that?
It it really depends on the employee. It's the four fifty seven. If you do a six percent, it may or may not depending on returns. We can't predict, and it's it's either the town's going to take that risk on and manage it and tell the employee what they can and can't do with their retirement, or the employee is going to have that option to do what they want. Having a pension plus a four fifty seven is a good combination because it gives the employee options. How the employee lives, what their priorities, we can't control that. But to be able to give the employee flexible options, which they have now several buckets with the town to choose from. They have the pension. They have the HSA. We're providing a four fifty seven. Their social security. So they've got a more of a variety pick on. But to determine will it or will it not, it's hard to make that prediction because it all depends on how the employee, how engaged they are in their retirement plan and what their goals and priorities are. It may not be a priority for an officer to retire in twenty five years. I mean, we have officers that retired from other jurisdictions working for us.
And that is the problem. That's the problem. We have an aging police force. And to have residents say that is alarming to try and defend it constantly. No, we don't have aging police officers. We have. We were able to recruit some young officers, and that was great for our town. So we don't want officers retiring from other jurisdictions that can barely walk and come here and want to work. I I don't want to see that.
But our turnover is not that high.
Not now, but it was. It was.
And you guys made some other changes that make it attractive to come to the town. And our benefit package is, I mean, really attractive. I mean, even with the PayPoint study that was done, it it said blatantly that the town has a generous benefit plan. But I do think having that, not tying the employee to the town just to get a pension is probably not the best way because you don't you want the employees to be here. You want them to be happy where they work. And by saying, well, you have to be here for twenty five years to get this benefit, it it limits the employee where a four fifty seven, that's theirs, and they may stay here for ten years, ten fifteen years. They may stay here for the whole time.
But it's unheard of, right? LOBS does that. They stay with them for twenty five years to get that benefit. So, you know, it's not unheard of. But thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for your response.
And with LOBS, they're able to go from agency to agency on that, and they won't lose it. So it's not like staying in place in one. So they wouldn't have to stay in one town. They could go to anybody that has LOBS.
The Maryland State Retirement is the same thing. I mean, there's like, I think, seven entities in Southern Maryland that participate in the Maryland State Retirement.
So did I hear you correctly? If the enhanced pension benefits for Plan Two or Three, if that is enacted, that stays here. That doesn't travel with them.
No.
So that's wow, okay, that sheds a whole different light on that, too. Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, you know.
Yeah, indeed.
I'm getting. No, I'm getting old, and if I don't say it, then I do good. But thank you so much.
Just a question, and then I I plugged in some numbers just to play with it. On row sixty one, there was a two. What happens if you make it a one?
Oh, it changes it. If I do one, it will change.
So I just put in there a two percent COLA.
Let me go back to yours.
Line sixty, four fifty seven, selected position, which is what, twenty one, three fifty four?
Okay.
And then.
The selected four fifty seven?
Yes.
And how much, what percentage?
Twenty one.
Twenty one percent?
I said twenty one thousand three. I mean, I mean, am I doing that one percent?
So yes, that would be one percent.
Okay. And then I plugged in Plan Three and a two percent COLA. Right? And that indicates a deficit of four ninety six and a tax increase three point zero. What is that, three point percent, three point two percent, or is that?
The deficit I have is six hundred and sixty two thousand with you've got a two percent COLA, Plan Three, and a one percent four fifty seven for selected positions. So that look correct?
Four fifty seven and so the same class would be getting a pension and.
And the four fifty seven.
And the four fifty seven.
Yeah, I'm not getting the same thing, but okay, I did it wrong.
So you you are looking at a two percent COLA.
Right.
An enhanced benefit plan, three, a four fifty seven contribution for select positions?
Yes.
Okay, one percent?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, so that increases the expense by eight hundred and twelve thousand, which is a six hundred and sixty two thousand dollar deficit, which would be a four cent increase. But again, we could bridge some of that with fund balance.
For this year?
Yeah.
But that's still not a balanced budget.
Well, it's it's not unreasonable for that amount to bridge it with fund balance. It it would be unreasonable to do six hundred thousand bridging it with fund balance.
But we wouldn't put give a selected class the four fifty seven as well as the enhanced benefit.
I mean, it's again, your priority to the majority to select.
He's agreeing. He's saying we would. So so we would take that out.
All right.
So I think we're, well, unless Councilman Challenger, I'm going to come back to you.
Oh, sure. I think, you know, the whole point of addressing the police officer retirement was to look at the rule of ninety that was the issue that, look, I I completely understand Councilwoman Winkler's concerns. But that was the whole point of our questions to our friend from Bolton, right? Was what are other municipalities doing? What's reasonable across the state and across other places in the country? And there's a reason why LOBS and other police departments throughout the state have retirement benefits to allow for officers. It's not just the exposure to PTSD that they have and the risks that they have every single day. It's because, as Councilwoman Brian Ward says, you you may not be as effective or helpful to your residents if you've got folks at fifty nine trying to do the same thing that our young cadet graduates are doing. It's not an efficient way. And to build continuity and culture with a department and with a town, you want people to be here long term. Which I think is why we've done all those studies, right? You know, police recruitment is down everywhere. ABC News reports it. And one of the major issues, I mean, DC Police, they're they're down. They've lost over four hundred and fifty officers in the last three years. And what has happened, right? Homicides are up, the most they've been in over twenty years. The carjackings are through the roof. You can't even do the Uber and the dash in stuff as far as, you know, second employment without fearing for your life. That's DC. But it has a ripple effect. Baltimore is dealing with it. And it's hard for our town to increase in size and have a local police department that is intentional in community and modern policing without providing and understanding that you put in your time, you put in the risk, you put in your exposure, that they're protected. Now, as we've had this discussion, there was an acknowledgement that our Public Works Department does a lot for our town. And and while I probably lean towards Councilman Winkler's position, we want to try to make sure that they have continuity with their group, too. And so, you know, as we look at this, you know, we want to allow for our residents to have the same level of services as we grow that they've been experiencing in a reasonable fashion. So when you gave us the, I think, the real dollar figures as to, and I really appreciated that. So for the estimate of a four hundred thousand dollar home and and, you know, with inflation, that that might be a low amount compared to many. But that's essentially with one of the plans, it's that six cents, basically twenty dollars a month for a household, which unfortunately, that's the cost of two meals at McDonald's now to increase the benefits for our town staff. And, you know, at the three cents, you know, that's at ten dollars at that four hundred thousand, right? A month. And then annually, you know, it's twenty at that number, right? And so I think I really appreciate looking at a way to bridge with fund balance while looking at our future costs. And for me, I think if we can do this at the least amount of pain as possible, of course, for raising anything that we don't want to, and we've asked the departments to cut. They've cut equipment costs. They've worked with you. They've taken things off their wish list, so to speak, continually. And I mean, if we can get to where we want to go to allow the the Public Works Department and and the police officers, I think the, you know, the least costly out of the two Bolton projections, and I guess that would be Plan Three, while trying to bridge with fund balance, I think, I mean, that that's where I am, okay? And and it's it's not taken lightly. And I know, you know, Adam Mayer has has talked about, you know, being fiscally responsible. I think it's fiscally irresponsible to look at the way a town has grown and to turn a blind eye to the problems that police departments are having throughout the state in recruitment and not consider the effects that will have on our young officers and the people that we want here to live here and work here. And so with that, and with the idea of we want to make sure that our public works are understood, that they're valued and appreciated as well, we want to try to do that. So help, you know, help me understand if I'm if I'm missing something here that we're not getting, you know?
No, I mean, again, my my main concern is the fiscal liability that the town's going to have. Also, one other thing I wanted to point out, Plan Three, the benefits for the PD are much higher than the benefits for the Public Works employees. So the cost is going to be more in the general fund side than in the enterprise fund side.
So with the Plan Three cost, so you've got Plan Three and Plan Two, but the Plan Two cost is like almost twice as much. That's because it's leveling out?
Well, it is, and it also has a COLA where Plan Three does not have a COLA, when the COLA is very expensive.
It has the COLA as part of the benefits plan, but that wouldn't preclude us in giving a COLA otherwise.
No, no, when the employee receives the benefit, Plan Two has a COLA on top of that, and that's part of the reason why it's much more expensive, where Plan Three does not have a COLA. So when an employee retires from the town and then we're bridging their retirement until they start with the Maryland State Retirement, there is no increase in that benefit for that period of time until they get to the Maryland State Retirement.
When what if, so we're doing six percent on Plan Three. What if we did ten percent covered payroll?
That's what the plan is. I mean, if we.
We did that.
Yeah, there were three plans.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So if I can go back to something that is just now, I'm wrapping my head around. I had no idea that the enhanced pension benefits, Plan Two and Plan Three, do not go forward, do not carry to. So I I have it today. I have a thirty year old. My kid is thirty. And I'm looking at these young officers. And as I have mentioned before, I have a young officer as well. This generation doesn't stick to one place. They move from place to place, and I love that. Be free. Spread your wings. But that will hurt them because what happens if they spend three years here and they have the enhanced pension benefits?
They wouldn't get a benefit.
They wouldn't. So what happens to that money?
Well, it would be put in part of the plan to pay out benefits to other employees that have met the qualifications. that have met the qualifications of the plan. So if if there's a lot of turnover, then we might not have any financial problems. If there's no turnover, we might be looking at needing to increase this and fund it more.
Is there a time when they're vested? I know
Ten years.
All right, so it's ten years. So if all of them make it to ten years, at ten years and one day, their pension can go with them?
No.
Okay.
They they keep it, but they would get paid based on the years of service. They wouldn't earn any more years of service, and it wouldn't be paid out until they meet the requirements of the plan.
Which would be whatever
Twenty five years or certain age. So if they didn't work twenty five years, in that plan, it's sixty years old when they would get the benefit.
So with the four fifty seven, they work here five years and move on? And they take that four fifty seven with them? And whatever was matched at that time? So if they did a full match, you know, if they put in two percent and we matched two percent for any employee from, you know, the the new, the newest hourly employee all the way up, that would go with them. So they could, they could take that out now. Now I'm getting into areas that my husband is going to tell me, you have no idea about taxes and all of that, but they could use that money more so whether they use it for retirement or they could use it for other?
Yeah, a four fifty seven, and once you separate from the employer, there's no age limit on it.
Okay. Okay.
So in turn, that end up, may end up being more costly because you could have
Well, not
Instead of it going back to the plan?
Not necessarily, because we'll know exactly what our costs upfront. Where with the pension plan, that cost, we really don't have, ten years from now, really don't know where it's going to be, but with the four fifty seven, we know if we're going to give a two percent, four percent, we know exactly what that cost is going to be. And we aren't stuck in that. So say next year, time group continues to grow and we can do a six percent, and we can continue that for two years, but suddenly we go into a time where we are like right now. We can decrease that temporarily and then increase it. We have flexibility to help manage our finances and not get into a position where we aren't sure what's going to happen and then have to make sure, because once we give this plan and the employee, and you're going to have, once this plan comes in, there's going to be a lot of employees that are going to be eligible that have been here for over ten years. We have to make sure we can pay those benefits.
They don't start from ground zero?
No, no, it goes back, it's all current employees. That's what the upfronting funding is for, is for those employees. So even those employees that may not be in a qualified position that would receive this, if they worked in a position that would fall under this, they would get that benefit if they met the ten years.
So question, most retirement plans, the money is not sitting in the bank account, it's sitting in an investment account.
Yes.
So what about the the money that is going to earn what's sitting in the investment account?
We would have somebody to administrate that.
Okay, so it's not like it's just our money that we're talking about, that that money is going to generate interest?
Yes.
Okay.
You would, yes.
Okay, and so and so if
Depends on the market.
So if I, so if we do, you know, I'm I'm sure that, you know, this is not unheard of, it's not, you know, they have to go, if they have LEOPS in some other place or the enhanced benefits, because when we looked at the comparative analysis that was given to us, there were fewer people with LEOPS and more with the enhanced benefit plan. That's why we came to this. So those folk can't go anywhere either if they've got an enhanced benefit benefit plan. So it's obvious not, obviously it's not an issue because they have them more. Municipalities had them or jurisdictions than not. And so that's how we landed here, trying to look at an enhanced benefit study. So if they decide not to stay with us for ten years, or if they stay with us for ten years, the money is there, it's vested, they do have, they have it, it can roll over or stay whatever, but they, it's it's not going with them, but it's sitting there for when they retire at sixty, but they still have the money.
If they hear for ten, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we got that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
That was someone four or five jobs ago.
Okay. Okay.
All right, Mania?
Oh, look at me. Yeah, I mean, we're looking for consensus. Is there a preferred combination of compensation and benefits that you would like us to plug in collectively? That we can then assess what the impact will be to the budget? I mean, I'm hearing Plan, you know, Plan Three, I'm hearing four fifty seven for select positions. So there's, and then we have a COLA as well. So, yeah, I would I would entertain if there is any consensus on one plan, if we want to start with enhanced pension benefits, Plan Two and Plan Three. Is there a consensus on that?
Well, I heard from, and I'm going to go down the roadway, and if I am incorrect in my assessment, please tell me. I heard that Councilman Winkler is a three percent COLA and a two percent everyone for four fifty seven?
If my memory is correct, and that is what Karina put in in last night's, then yes, there is a difference.
Okay, I am the same. And I guess I'm going to ask Councilman Challenger, are you on for a COLA at all?
It's it's kind of depend on where we come in on these other benefits, because I want to balance it with what we're asking our residents to chip in on. And I I think I'll defer on the COLA until we have a consensus on that.
All right, and you are a Plan Two, I mean, Plan Three, you said?
As we sit here, Ms. Larson, you've told me that Plan, and and I I guess I'm still kind of hung up on H, the row H, it being, you said that it's it's Plan Two is, yeah, sorry.
Bit two.
Yeah, Plan Two versus Plan Three as far as it being less value for Public Works Plan?
It's Plan Three is, because Public Works would get a one point eight percent, and the PD would get, I believe, a two point two five percent.
And but in Plan Three, it would increase their current benefits?
Yeah, well, it depends for a town employee that started here July, before July of twenty twelve, it's the same. Because right now with the Maryland State Retirement, they have the age sixty and thirty years, and they also get the one point eight percent. It's those employees that started after July two thousand and twelve that has the newer plan, which is the ninety years, which is age plus years of service, and it's a one point five percent.
So that would be, and the ones before July twenty twelve are at one point eight?
Yes.
Okay. I, I I mean, I'm open to hearing more, but I'm I'm I lean towards Plan Three.
Okay. Councilwoman Brian Ward?
Can you pull up my spreadsheet?
Yes.
And the tax increase was three percent?
Yes.
Okay, and that looks like about what terms of? Fourteen hundred, it would be fourteen hundred dollars, a hundred and twenty dollar change from the current tax on a four hundred thousand dollar house. And fund balance is what?
Fund balance, we would bridge it with two hundred and nineteen thousand.
Okay, and you're comfortable, you said you didn't want to go above three hundred thousand for fund balance?
I don't think it's, I I don't think we should, I don't think it's going to be a large issue being how small it is considered, the percentage. My only concern would be you guys have a lot of capital assets you want to purchase, and that fund balance is with what we have is probably not going to increase to cover all of that.
Tell me, why again is the benefit for the Public Works? I know there is fewer employees in for the the Public Works that we're including than the police, but why is the benefit different? Why is it two point two five for the police and one point eight for the?
That's the plan, that's Plan Three.
Right, I know, but why?
That's what Bolton
He didn't give us a rationale for it?
Not as much data, and so that was the reasoning for the difference on the plans. Plan One and Two put both Public Works and PD at the same benefit level.
If I may?
Please.
In his, in Bolton's memo on December nineteenth, in the analysis, it says Public Works groups are not as frequently provided separate benefits, so there is not as much benchmarking for that group. It's it's an arbitrary number, the two point two five and the one point eight that he selected for, to give us another option.
And you have a three percent COLA raise, three percent COLA increase, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
It did do the three percent.
And then you did Plan Three?
Plan Three, yeah.
Okay. All right, and Councilman Jenkins?
Mr. Stahl just wanted to point out that the actual benefit for the Plan Three, because we have a lot of long term employees, is not going to benefit as many due to the fact that we do have long term employees that already are going to get the one point eight percent.
So it doesn't benefit the young ones as much?
The ones that were here later, your long term employees that have been here for a while, it's not going to benefit them.
And you have a lot of long term versus newbies, okay? Good information to know. And Councilman Jenkins? Could you pull up his sheet, please?
Well, I I can just add on to what Councilwoman Bryant Ward said. I've said my only wrinkle would be a two percent call on that three, but Plan Three.
Okay. So it sounds like we've got a majority at COLA at three percent, and you have three council members that have Plan Three on there. What is the increase in taxes for our residents?
So on this particular one, that's four percent, but if we do three, we would be bridging two hundred and nineteen thousand.
For this year, what is it next year? I mean, if if we're in, and if you're in, you're all in.
I think the estimate was like two hundred and eleven thousand, but it also
Because next year, we're going to go through the same thing. We're going to have a deficit, and we're going to have to take fund balance, or you're going to have to increase.
We aren't going to have the initial setup costs. The only thing that I'm concerned about is our revenue or might decrease because of the revenues include interest, which is a significant amount in this budget. Other than that, it, and when I calculated our real property tax, I did it based on a trend and not what we normally do, and knowing what applications were in process and what's been approved, we did it based on a trend which was higher. And the same thing with income taxes. Instead of just adding the three percent to the last previous budget, we, I looked at the actuals and increased it based on the average wages, which was four point six eight percent. So that went up considerably too. So we need to make sure that those revenue streams continue that trend to ensure that we can cover these benefits.
I just want to publicly state again, I just, I cannot, in good faith, raise taxes. We can phase this in, we can rethink this, but based on the attitude of the commissioners today, and two of them, and and one had said something beforehand and information that I have received outside of that. Based on that, based on the absolute cost of everything, I don't see how, I I mean, I can't go out there and sell this to the public, I can't. I I just don't think that that is right now in this climate. Maybe next year, maybe we phase, I, not maybe, we phase it in. We offer something, there is a pension already. There is a pension if we can do, and we have been generous. We get, we got that cash cow from ARPA, and we rewarded and recognized the hard work of our employees. And not only did we bring them all up to the sixty fifth percentile, we gave them a merit raise and a COLA raise, that was a fat year for them. And now what's happening is, and I don't care if we've ever raised taxes or if we've if we've raised taxes every single year. This is not the year to raise taxes. It is just, I I don't think that our community can can handle even another twenty dollars for McDonald's or whatnot. People aren't going to McDonald's, people aren't going to, they're they're cutting back while we are saying we're going to expand our budget. So it would be fiscally prudent of us to phase it in and go with a balanced budget and then just start adding on slowly. We've already rewarded them so greatly with a sixty fifth percentile. And I am talking to other municipalities, which they thought we were crazy, and they're using the same pay point study that we did. So I I have to say that I just, I can't, and I won't.
There there is also an option to look at this mid year. If we want to put it, if there isn't a census, we could put it mid year. Otherwise, if there's a census, we can continue on.
So other municipalities are raising taxes. Virginia, they're they're, they went through and they raised taxes. They talked about being physically, they didn't feel that they could not raise taxes. At some point, we're going to get to a point and that we're going to have to raise taxes. And when we do it, it's going to be devastating because we have not done it, and we've got this growth that's coming, we need staff. We're balancing the budget on the back of the town. We're asking departments to say, give up an employee, give up an employee here, balance the budget. You know, we can, we can say that people are cutting back. None of our restaurants are closing, none of our grocery stores are closing. So I'm I'm not confident that, and and people are shopping. If you look, I look on my green camera, there's a package on somebody's door every day, multiple packages. So we cannot say that they are struggling. We had, the average household income in our town is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. People are buying homes at four and five hundred thousand dollars just down the road. So we can't say that they are not able to pay an additional twenty dollars, ten dollars a month in the next fiscal year. We're not talking tomorrow. Would you rather them call the police and not have the police come because we don't have them? Not have people in Public Works to be out there until three or four in the morning fixing water lines? What, is that what we want? And so, you know, we can, and it's and it's not, and we've got to stop saying that we're increasing taxes to fund a pension. That is not true, because there were other areas that we asked folk to cut. We're increasing the sewer fund, and people complain about water every single day in their sewer bill, every single day. And we're we're going to increase that? So I I am, I'm not in agreement, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and pretend that it's okay to make people feel like I'm, for the public, I'm not against the public. I want them to have good, sound officers to come to their door when their children go missing, when somebody's being shot. I want our police officers, because otherwise we're going to be dependent upon the county. And I can't imagine that that's what we want. I can't imagine that that's what we want in a state of emergency. So it is not about the pension plan. It is about recruitment and retention and being able to attract good, sound workers to this area. We increased the salaries because we were losing staff. We increased the salaries because we were losing staff. Every month, somebody was turning over. Director Stahl said it. He said, I am a training ground for DC Water. We were getting officers, um, Public Works folk to come in here, work for a little bit, get all of that education, get the certifications that we paid for, and they left. I have not heard a department talk about anybody leaving since we did the, the salary increase. We became marketable. We were underpaying them. The only reason we did the increase because they were all below market. We didn't just decide to give them increases. We looked at the study and it showed that they were below market. Nobody could afford to live here. And so it's not about the pension plan. It's absolutely not about it.
In addition to the pension plan, you will have a raise in your water and sewer. We've already said that with the fees and this will impact it. That's why we couldn't do the enterprise fund last night. So as, uh, Councilwoman Bryant Ward said, we already have people complaining about our water and sewer fees and how much they are, they're going to go up. So we're going to raise taxes and we're going to raise, uh, our fees in this economy. Okay?
I'd like to have this, my moment of reflecting, uh, and, and a, and a perspective. I don't think any of us, and, and I'll speak for myself, I don't think any of us take lightly the responsibility about how we use taxpayers' revenues. Cause I've lived here thirty-six years now, so I get it. But I've come from a background in public service and government at different levels and also in the private sector. And so I've come to learn that, and living here, that folks, to their credit and to the town's credit, you know, we have some pretty good services that are provided by the town. Okay? Water, sewer, trash, police and police power and zoning power. And so unfortunately, a lot of folks don't, they come to expect that and that's a good thing. But they don't really quite understand and it's not their fault. So when they turn the water on, they think, well, I'm going to get clean water and I could drink it. Or when I have to go to the restroom, it's going to flush and we're going to meet the standards for outfall into the, into the river. And, and we're meeting all those requirements. And oh, by the way, um, Public Works gets a phone call at three o'clock in the morning because a road collapsed and clerks run. And they spent a quarter of a mi, what, half a million dollars to fix the hole, the hole in the, because the pipe rotted out. Uh, police call, they get a call in the morning because somebody robbed somebody. So there's an expectation and that's a good thing. But for me, uh, unfortunately, Pat, and this is past history and I can't change that. But we have had a history of delaying, delaying, delaying and hoping it'll go away. And now we've reached, for me, we've reached a crescendo where we have growth and a lot of people don't like it. And I get that too. But with that growth, you have, you have more demand on services. That didn't require a staff to provide those professional services. And they have to have much better qualifications to, to provide those services. So we're, we're kind of stuck here that there's an expectation we have services. Oh, but, um, but we don't want to pay for it. That's a choice. And, and personally, I'm not necessarily want to make that choice. I think there's an expectation that we need to provide those services. To the council's credit, when we first took office, there was a study done that said, you need X amount of employees to maintain your professional staff to maintain those services. And we went out and we did things to enhance that. And, and I think you see that. So again, it, it's not taken lightly, the, the, the likelihood of maybe now or in the future doing tax increases or revenue enhancement, whatever you want to call it. But unfortunately for me, I, I, I still have a hard time understanding for twenty-one years, we didn't do it. We did a lot of things and we didn't have to raise taxes. But unfortunately now, the bill is due because of all the development, all the requirements, some of which are federally and state mandated that we have to do. I mean, we're going to spend what, four hundred thousand dollars because the state wants us to fix a dam at Toma Lake? You know, so my whole point is that, um, I, I don't want to do this, but I feel that we have to do it, at least for me, because we've kicked this can down the road for about fifteen years. Well, maybe ten, but we've kicked it. So now we want to kick it down the road again and again and again. And so we're never going, so the, so we're going to make it that much more expensive if we keep kicking the can down the road to a future council or, or new population. And then one final thought, uh, and, and this is based upon some experiences from my former days as a, as a reform urban planner. Uh, we, we need to be, this is me again. We need to be very careful that we're going to completely depend upon funding from residential development. Okay, because it doesn't pay for itself in the long term. So I, again, I, I, I get it and I understand the consternation. But we, to me, this is something that I think we may, may have to do. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, tax increases aren't going to increase services. They're just, they may keep people here, but they're not going to increase the services. The services, if we're going to increase services, we're going to have to hire people. If we hire people, we're going to have to increase taxes even more. So right now, as we stay, it's one body that we're hiring and that's I T. We've re-structured the police. So the people that are there are in different positions. And we are going to, um, give benefits COLA to all employees. And then we are going to raise taxes. Um, but we will have the enhanced pension benefit that we will have there. And then water and sewer will raise as well when we get to the fees there, because that is just a given in any other fees. So it's a tough, it's a, it's a tough call here. And an observation, I can say from my neighborhood, a lot of people that are retiring, they're moving and they're moving to Delaware. And why? Because Delaware has no tax on that. And I have, I can tell you, four of my neighbors down the street did. As soon as they hit sixty, they're here, they're gone. So I, I mean, it, it does impact their bottom line and their, their wallet. So, um, just had to say that. Uh, I'll take final, um, comments, if any.
D C saw a increase in response time of over ninety seconds when they lost their officers. Ninety seconds is a big deal in a life or death situation. Our officers were on the front lines when we had that awful tragedy in AgroCopia in arms with Charles County officers. And they were able to secure safety for one of those involved and ensure the safety of a, a couple different people in that situation because they were local and they knew the neighborhood and they knew the folks involved. And it's because of a local police department that we have a sense of community in small towns. And when you make it such that the incentive for our officers are not to stay because they can get, and, and I want to be clear, we've wrestled with this issue, not just this council, but past council. We've gone through probably three or four different iterations of what is the culmination of today. And each time we've walked it back further and further. This is not as expensive as, as Leop's. It is not as expensive as what the Charles County Police Officers, the, the, the similar plan would be for our town. And we're trying to do what is, um, right by our residents to allow for an active and efficient police force that is known in the community and can raise the level of the standards that we have. And so I appreciate, um, the discussion. I think some of it has been disingenuous, to be frank. And you cannot separate recruitment and maintaining the folks that we have with public safety in this situation and in this environment nationwide. I am completely okay with raising an average of ten dollars a month to ensure the safety of our residents. And it's something that we all deal with too. And so that's, that's what I'll say about that, to keep our residents safe. I'm not going to, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to put that at risk.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, actually, you, you said something and I, I want to make, make it really kind of clear. I don't think anybody is asking for a reduction in service or is not appreciative about the Public Works employees or the police department and all that they do. If you're going to do it, because, and you just said something that, that it, it's, it's a, a fix, but it doesn't put it on par with Charles County or any of the other local municipalities. So in two years, we're going to be right back here asking for the same thing. We want more. So my argument is not to fix the problem. If we're going to fix it, let's fix it the correct way. Let's fix it by giving them on par with the Charles County Sheriff's Department or with the state police. And it might be, it might require a tax increase. I'm, I'm not saying it doesn't. All I'm saying is that what the plans that we have in front of us today are not going to solve the problem. It, it is kicking it down the road for somebody else to deal with down, down the road. I, I, I think that, that there's, there's a way to do things and there's a way not to do things. And I'm not trying to say, sound like I'm an expert on all things. But I, I just think that, that for far too long, this has been proverbial kick down the road to, to other councils. And, and now we're in the eleventh hour trying to make a decision. Whereas in December, if the collective council had sat down in a quote unquote work session, we could have hashed this out and we would not be here at, uh, eight twenty-two P M on a special night, having a special meeting to discuss something. I, 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 I think that, that no one expects services to be, to be, um, um, or, or, or nobody expects that, that Public Works and the police department do not provide exceptional service to our residents and the response time. And I, and, and I think that's, that's, but this does not solve that.
Thank you. And this council collectively has at least one more budget cycle to do. If this is something that is clearly passionate for three council members up here, four, well, five, I think all five of us, but we are looking at, um, how to pay for this. As you said, we can do this mid-cycle. We can do this, we can start off slow, redo it. We do need to sit down and talk. And I, I do take, uh, uh, to hear disingenuine when there are statistics that are being thrown out about D C. Um, I don't know if you have in front of you why they left. If it was not their chief that they left for, or if it was for benefits. To throw out numbers, that's cool. I mean, you can throw out numbers all you want, but you got to have the facts to stand behind them to say the reason of their exit was because of poor benefits. Uh, I'm just, I don't want to put fear in people without having supported, um, documentation with that. All right, Mr. Manuel? You've been awfully quiet.
Here to listen. So just to summarize, what we will plug in is a three percent COLA for all employees and Plan Number Three.
And I want it on the record that I am an absolute no against this. Absolute raising taxes.
And also like to put on the record that we're going to come back and revisit this. That this is just not a one, a one-timer. Okay, but I want that on the record. Okay?
And I need to get this.
No, 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 I, I'm saying sometime after this is adopted, we need to, as Councilwoman Winkler adequately said, we ought to come back after this and revisit this throughout the, this remainder of this fiscal year and fiscal year twenty-five.
So is it one?
So, so it's not just forget about it and we do it next, next budget cycle. That is the point. He, and I totally agree with that. Okay, we have, we have to have ongoing work sessions and discussions because it doesn't go away because we vote on something tonight or whenever we do it.
So my understanding is you're, um, putting this in budget as a placeholder to select a plan later in the year?
No, I'm, when I'm, that's not what I said. What I said was we should come back and revisit this during the budget. Like you do your monthly budget reports, we should come back and talk about it every other month or every month to see where we are on costs of, of the plans. That's all I'm saying. It, it's, I'm not saying we change it. I'm saying we monitor it, we monitor the, the plan and the cost throughout the year. So next budget cycle, we have more information to perhaps, if we have to, I don't know, change it, modify it, whatever. That's next budget cycle.
Yes, but once you put this plan in place, you're making a promise and to the employees. So once this plan's in place, you, you can't change it. It's, it's a plan that.
I, I'm just suggesting, again, you, you're, you're making this, or maybe I am, but anyway. I, I'm just saying we need to have ongoing discussions about these issues. So I'll make that very simple. Okay, we come back and we talk about the issues.
But the public will have an opportunity one more time to discuss, uh, to endorse or not. On, uh, May fourteenth, we will have a public hearing. And at that time, um, they can be heard as well. And that's when we, after that, uh, we will vote on the budget. This is moving forward. And as it is stated by, uh, the majority, it, uh, Plan Three with a three percent COLA is going forward. And, um, that is, uh, at the cost of, what is the tax increase on that one?
Yes, it's three cents.
Three cents? And we will bridge that with taking from the fund balance.
It's after it's taken.
Two hundred and nineteen thousand.
Which will also impact all of the other capital that we're looking at down the road.
Specifically, Karina will publish a tax rate of point three five.
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, I will get a final on the record. Uh, so we're looking for consensus to move forward with three percent COLA and Plan Three. Councilman Winkler? That, yes or no?
You go, sister.
Okay, Councilman Chollinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Mayor James is a no. All right. So that takes us to our next item. Do you need anything else on that one?
Nope.
Takes us to our next item on the, uh, budget, I mean, on the agenda, which is the enterprise fund.
Just Madam Mayor and Town Council, there was a memo included with last night's agenda. Hopefully you have that. It summarizes the enterprise funds, uh, which would be sanitation, sewer, water and stormwater. If I can start with the sanitation fund, I will go through that paragraph. Uh, the sanitation fund budgeted expenses for F Y twenty-five is two million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, representing a two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollar or eleven point two percent increase from fiscal year twenty-four budget. This increase is due to personnel, includes an additional one point four full-time equivalent and new position allocations, additional landfill costs, which sometimes are referred to as tipping fees, uh, and the general funds supporting administrative costs. Uh, to cover these expenses, the budget includes a proposed rate increase of twenty dollars or twenty-five percent, increasing the refuse collection rate per unit from eighty dollars to one hundred dollars. In addition to the trash service fee, a proposed increase for recycling fees from thirteen dollars and twenty cents to fifteen dollars per quarter is also included to cover the budgeted expenses for recycling services that are expected to increase ten percent. So I will pause there and if there are any questions relative to the sanitation fund.
All right, council, do I have any questions based on this? So it's eleven point two percent increase with another twenty dollars going up for trash and another two dollars going up for recycling. Is that per quarter?
It is per quarter, but it's a twenty-five percent increase.
Oh, twenty-five percent increase. Okay, so it's per quarter, so another twenty-two dollars a quarter, eighty-eight dollars?
It's another twenty dollars per quarter.
Plus, plus the recycling.
Yeah, plus the recycling, yeah.
Okay, so annually?
Well,
It's quarterly. I mean, but annually, it's another, because are you saying twenty plus two? So twenty-two? Two dollars for the recycling? I'm sorry, you cut out.
Oh, no, the recycling is currently thirteen twenty per quarter. We're requesting to increase to fifteen dollars per quarter.
So almost two dollars. So it will be per quarter, an additional twenty-two dollars, twenty plus two, so another eighty-eight dollars a year. Okay. And that's on the enterprise?
Yes.
Okay. All right, council, any discussion, question on that? Does that take into, now that you have the fund?
Even though there's changes, I don't anticipate we needing to increase it more than what it's being proposed here.
Okay. Okay. Any comments, questions?
Yes, yep, so this was discussed previously. This was a recommendation by our Public Works Department. This just covers, right?
Yeah, and it's because of the landfill.
Sure.
I'm not, not
Thank you.
So, so, so I think, but the landfill, was it my understanding that the county increased the landfill costs? We didn't?
Right.
And how much was it, did it increase it? From the county? Thank you.
All right, so we're looking for a consensus to move this forward. Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Chollinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
It's moving forward. All right, next on the agenda is new business, and we have a motion for closed session.
I'm just point of order, did you?
I did not.
Okay, so you're
I did not vote either way. And no vote is a yes vote. That's procedure.
I think
Are we doing the sewer fund?
Yeah, we have, we have
Oh, sewer funds, oh, sorry, I'm already there. So we had a consensus, my vote didn't matter.
Your vote as mayor doesn't matter on covering the costs for
It was moving
Cycling and for, for trash?
No, it, it was a consensus only. The consensus was, there was a majority of
So we have, we have an opinion from the Public Works Department that we should raise this to cover the
My vote is yes. Moving on.
I just wanted to make sure.
But it's not a vote, it's a consensus.
It's a consensus. If there's a majority, it does not, I do not need to do a vote. I mean, I do not need to say yes or no. But thank you for pointing
Mary might want to.
Well, thank you for that. We'll take that under advisement. All right, sewer funds?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, the sewer fund budgeted expense for FY twenty-five is fifteen million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and six dollars. This represents a four million, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-six or forty-five point eight percent increase from the FY twenty-four budget. Of the fifteen million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and six, five million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-three is for operating costs. And ten million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-three is budgeted for capital projects and assets. Operating expenses are budgeted to increase seven, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars or sixteen point five percent. This is due to personnel, including an additional one point seven full-time equivalent employees, inclusion of one hundred percent depreciation, and the general fund supporting administrative costs. To cover these expenses, the budget includes, excuse me, includes a proposed rate increase of seven percent, increasing rates of Tier One and Three to fourteen dollars and fifty cents and Tier Two to sixteen dollars and twenty cents per one thousand gallons. The ten million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars of capital expenses will be covered with an eight million dollar USDA loan. This will be paid back using major facility fee revenues. Eight hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars will be paid with a signed ARPA fund balance. And the remaining one million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, thirty-two dollars will be supplemented with fund balance.
All right, do I have any discussion, any questions, any comments?
I have one question, and I apologize for the ignorance, but on the sewer, you have Tier One, Three, and Two. Can you explain what's the difference between a Tier One and a Tier Two?
Yeah, so Tier One is up to fifteen thousand gallons. Tier Two is from fifteen to a hundred thousand, and Tier Three is over a hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions? On that? So you're looking for a consensus to, for the sewer fund?
Yes.
Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Chollinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am a yes, moving forward for a consensus. All right, next on the store, Water Fund?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, the Water Fund budgeted expenses for FY twenty-five is two million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and five dollars. This represents a one million, two hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars or sixty-five point seven percent increase from fiscal year twenty-four budget. Of the two million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and five dollars, one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and five is for dollars, excuse me, is for operating costs. And one million, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars is budgeted for capital projects and assets. Operating expenses are budgeted to increase two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars or seventeen point two percent. This is due to personnel, inclusion of a one hundred percent depreciation, GIS services, and the general fund supporting administrative costs. To cover these expenses, the budget includes a proposed rate increase of seven percent, increasing rates of Tier One and Three to four dollars and eighty-five cents and Tier Two to five dollars and sixty cents per one thousand gallons. One million, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars of capital improvements will be supplemented with a signed ARPA fund balance and the remaining one hundred thousand with unassigned fund balance.
When it says the increased rates of Tiers One and Three go up to four eighty-five, what were they?
I don't and I can't get to my files. Well, I can't, if I'm not connected to the internet, it won't let me get to them.
Okay, and, and the same with the other ones. I mean, we're saying they're increasing too, but are we increasing it twenty cents? Were you increasing it? You know, what is the impact that will be seen?
Unfortunately, I can't get to my files to give you that information.
Okay.
Would it be on our fee schedule?
Yes, it would be.
Current fee schedule. Bear with me, this may take planning permits.
Is it on the website?
Yeah, I'm trying to pull up the
Well, it's coming up now.
She will find it much quicker than All right, water usage per one thousand gallons, up to fifteen thousand gallons, which was the rate.
Tier One?
Tier One. Looks like the current rate is four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Okay, so it's going up another thirty cents.
And Tier Two, fifteen thousand, one gallons to one hundred thousand gallons is five dollars and twenty-five cents.
So it's going up thirty-five cents.
And then the Tier Three above one hundred thousand, four dollars and fifty-five cents as well, so.
Thirty cents, okay. Looking for a consensus, if this is acceptable to move forward, Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Chollinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Okay, and it's moving forward, I'm fine, move it forward for consensus. And the Stormwater Fund Balance?
This is Madam Mayor and Town Council, the Stormwater Fund budgeted expenses for FY twenty-five is two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. This represents a three hundred fifty-one thousand, ninety dollar or thirteen point eight percent decrease from FY twenty-four budget. Of the two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars, one million, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars is for the operating cost and one thousand, or excuse me, one million, one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars is budgeted for capital projects. Operating expenses are budgeted to increase thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars or three point four percent. An eight percent rate increase is proposed for a quarterly rate of twenty-seven dollars from twenty-five to fully cover the operating expenses. ARPA funds and assigned ARPA fund balance will be used to cover one million, one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars of the MS Four permit required expense.
All right, any questions or comments from the council? And after the ARPA funds are dried up, this, we still have to do the MS Four. And so we will have to address that, that will be an increase. I like the word decrease to begin with, that's the first time I've seen that in a while.
Capital compared to the FY twenty-four capital, but operating is increasing.
So ARPA funds will cover it just this year?
Um, what we budgeted this year.
For FY twenty-five, I'm sorry?
Or yes.
And, and then ARPA funds are no longer, then we'll have to address this again. Okay. All right, looking for a consensus to, for the Stormwater Fee Increase?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Chollinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well. All right, now, am I, am I done with this? And this is now going to close, a new business or a motion to go into closed session?
Go back to our
Am I right on that one?
Budget discussion, yes.
All right, it is, we have a reason to go into closed session. I will entertain a motion. We have a reason to go into two closed sessions. I'll entertain a motion from council?
Madam Mayor, I move that we go into closed session immediately following our special meeting. I gotta read it all? Hold on, where is it? Where is it? General provisions article three dash three oh five B to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, the topic of which is to obtain legal advice for potential litigation. It also includes statutory authority to close special general provisions three oh five B. One, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointee, employee, or official over whom it has jurisdiction. Topic being personnel.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Madam Clerk or Director Phipps, could you do, please do a roll call? If you will go, are you willing to go into closed session for these two items? Please indicate by saying yay. If not, please indicate by saying nay. Yes, I hear you, yay.
Yes.
Yay.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. And I move to adjourn this meeting at eight forty-four and we'll immediately start the closed session following this. Thank you all for coming.